All right, let's get started. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is a meeting on Lake Jackson City Council on Tuesday, January the 18th. Regular session, beginning here at 6:30. And I'd like to welcome everybody that's joined us here on city council today. Appreciate it. It's always great to have citizens involved in the process. We'll begin the evening with pledges allegiance led by Councilman Sinhania.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the third state's flag, the pledge leads us to the Texas, one state, under God, one image as well.
And invocation will be led by Councilman Baker.
Please bow your head. Dear most heavenly Father, thank you for this day, a day we'll never see again. Dear most heavenly Father, bless our firefighters, our law enforcement, and EMS as they service us on a daily basis. Dear most heavenly Father, just bless us as we do our duty to do our best to strengthen and bless the city of enchantment. Dear most heavenly Father, just bless us and return us home safely. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you know what Sherry said?
No.
Okay. I'm about to see their pants. What? Everybody should have come over here. Okay. All right. It's up to you to keep us out of trouble.
No adult supervision.
All right, we have visitors' comments. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak to council about any item that's not on the regular or consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation, proclamation, and we'll do that right now.
Do you want a picture? You have a phone?
Sure.
I know you guys usually post one, so.
Do you have a phone?
You usually post one, so.
It is 2022.
You're good angles.
You want to come in and appear and join me?
Sure. This is proclamation. I, Gerald Roszansky, hereby the authority vested in me as mayor of City of Lake Jackson, Texas, hereby proclaim February 19th, 2022, as Vow 22 Day. Whereas Vow 22 was originally incorporated in the state of Texas as a nonprofit organization in 2017, whereas on February 19th, 2022, Vow 22 will be showing support and bringing awareness to veteran suicide during their event at McLean Park. At the Civic Center. Whereas Vow 22 is a group of friends, families, and veterans that have all been affected by post-traumatic stress disorder in some way. The organization seeks to prevent veteran suicide through community awareness, camaraderie, interaction, and communication with veterans. According to VA's suicide data reported in 2012, there is a national average of 22 suicides per day, or 8,000 a year. The VA study also shows 11,000 non-fatal suicide attempts per year. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of City of Lake Jackson, do hereby proclaim February 19th, 2022, as Vow 22 Day in the City of Lake Jackson.
Hoorah.
Hoorah. Thank you.
And the one in the packet was right, so I'm not sure what happened, but we'll.
Okay.
We'll print it in.
That's all right. Okay, sure. Is there anything you wanted to say about the event?
Yeah, come up and plug it. He always talks. As a background, I grew up in this area. Bradswood, '97 graduate, so I'm from here. I joined Marine Corps '98, a little over 11 years in Marines. Heavy equipment mechanic, got deployed twice. When I got back, I got selected for a drone instructor duty to train the next generation of Marines coming through boot camp. I got out, came home, worked for a little company, I'm not heard of Buckeyes, and been doing that for 11 years. And we found out there was a need in our community for veterans. There wasn't much for the younger generation around here, and then we found out there was a bigger need for mental health care. So it was Vow 22, we pay for the veteran, spouse, and the children, the mental health counseling, no cost to them. Their work doesn't need to know, their insurance doesn't need to know, and the VA doesn't need to know, but we encourage them to keep continuing those appointments. So that's what we do on a regular. We try to have bi-monthly meet and greets. We get together, get these veterans out of their holes because they become hermits after we get out. We don't want to interact with civilians, so we try to get them out in the community again, re-integrate them back to being a civilian, because yes, you're the 1% of the serve of the military, but you need to become a civilian again, a productive member of society, and that's what we kind of do. And everything we always do is family-oriented. Our event, it is an event for the city. It's not, we're not charging a mission, we're not, anybody, everybody can attend, and we encourage it to show these veterans that show up to our event, our support, Missouri County has for our veterans. Because y'all come out and show out for our veterans, and show the love, these got young men and women that are out there hiking with us, that hey, this community really loves us and takes care of us. So I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Give us the time.
The time will be from 8:00 AM till about 1300, 1 o'clock. We are stepping off a little later this year at 10:30, because, and I forgot to add this, the BCPC, as y'all might know, Missouri County Petrochemical Council, all the heads of all the plants around here, are having a career fair that day inside for us. They're backpacking off of us, they're gonna have a career fair that day, they're gonna show all the stuff that they have, and they might be actually hiring. So it doesn't matter what the veterans are wearing, they can come in here as a veteran job fair. So that way, another thing we can offer our veterans, that day is maybe employment. If not employment today, maybe the information, what they can get for later on when those companies are hiring. So from 8:00 AM till 1300, and then after that, we have our downtown, we have our after-party. It's just, everybody, instead of just being done with the hike, everybody separates ways, we found out a little bit of after-party, a little extra camaraderie downtown, support our local businesses down there, from the worst house all the way down to what's that last one, around before Timmyville.
Wayside.
Wayside. So while they're hanging out, having a good time, they have, they're gonna have their specials for us. So that way, the veterans and families can get together, get each other's phone numbers, we want to be the new hometown unit, that way they have somebody to rely on, instead of all their buddies that have now gone back home. So, anything else, guys?
That's great. The other thing is, like you said, I do encourage citizens to join in the march, because it was, last year, I think the estimate was around 500 people. So it was, and it was a lot of citizens that were there, and it was, it was great. It was really good, and I really enjoyed it and looking forward to being along with you guys again.
Appreciate y'all.
Also, also, we started a program, the Constables Office, for, we go to veterans' court and we support them, and I'd like for you to come with me and, one day, and we can see if we can help out. Yes. Yes.
Sounds good.
All right.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate you. We're gonna move on to declaration of conflict of interest. This is where any member on city council can declare any kind of conflict they have, conflict of interest associated with any item on the consent agenda or regular agenda. Is there any kind of conflict to be disclosed? Hearing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. We have four items. First item is approve the minutes of the January 3rd, 2022 council meeting. Item two is accept board's commission minutes from Planning Commission, Keep Lake Jackson Beautiful, and Lake Jackson Development Corporation. Item three is authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Sky Wonder Pirate Techniques LLC for the 4th of July fireworks in the amount not to exceed $25,000. And item four is resolution approving closure of portion of Circle Way from the museum to Oak Drive, and waive the fees for the Civic Center Plaza and full facility for the forthcoming Missouri County Vow 22 Annual Veteran Suicide Prevention Event. Is there any item on the consent agenda that council would like to remove for further discussion? Hearing none, take motion on this consent agenda.
We'll approve consent agenda, one, two, three, and four.
All right.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ball in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to regular agenda. Regular agenda, we have item one is discuss removal of canopy within downtown revitalization Phase 3 project. Megan.
Good evening, everyone. So as you'll see in the packet, we were able to get hold harmless agreements, as requested by council, signed by all of the property owners within the scope of work. So that agreement was drawn up by Sherry, they all reviewed it with insurance providers and attorneys, if they felt like that was necessary, we gave them ample time. I think they had about two months with the contract, so, and I worked with them every step of the way, met with all of them in person, so they all felt comfortable signing, you'll see those in front of you. So we are ready to move forward with the work if you don't have any other questions or comments to make.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I want to make sure that verification on that the, if the buildings did not have windstorm, we're not going to be obligated to.
Yes, so if anyone is interested, I printed off, I got on the Windstorm Search TDI website, all of them do have, so, Sherry can maybe clarify this, I know your question was particular about the roofs. All of them have certification except for one property. I spoke with him, but this will only be certified, so we hired Sedna Engineering, it's a local engineering firm, they work with Brandt Bowles at IAD Architects. He will be certifying these, which we will pay for, it's $955 per individual unit, so per property, but that is only, we're only certifying it for where we touch. So we aren't recertifying roofs or anything like that, we are only certifying the work that we are doing on the facade. So that will be his, his job, that's the portion. If you see, I think it's item three or four on the hold harmless agreement, that is what he's referencing, so they're all aware of that, and I spoke with Sherry, we're on the same page, so I think we're covered there, but if you have any other questions, happy to look into it.
It also says that they might lose their windstorm, because once we get in there, all this rotten wood and stuff might be discovered, so that's in there, that we're not gonna be responsible if they lose their windstorm because of something that's uncovered.
Great.
Thank you.
And where is the removal of the canopy on the timeline?
So you'll see, the next agenda item is for you to approve, hopefully, that, and then we'll start moving as quickly as possible. We want to have it done sooner, that way they have some buffer time between that and when we touch for the phasing of construction.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to item two. Item two is award contract to RMA Commercial for North Parking Place Canopy Demolition and Facade in an amount not to exceed $279,000.
Yeah, that was the item that you postponed until now, and I've been in touch with RMA. He's been, he's been asking me when this project is supposed to be, I mean, when this thing, so he could start working on it. Finally, I told him, I sent him an email as soon as we found out that we had gotten all the signatures, so he's planning on moving in on probably by sometime this month.
Okay. Any questions on, from council about this project, this phase of the project?
Sal, Sal, I'm sorry. Have we done some work with this company before?
RMA did the, all the canopy work on the commercial area across the highway, on the shopping center.
Okay.
They were involved in doing all the canopy and all the needed work, all the surfacing work on that, in that shopping center.
They're a lot lower than the highest bid in half of the amount of time, huh?
Yes, yes, they are. Noble Construction is a, is a local company, but for some reason, RMA, well, RMA had all this practice before, so he knew what to expect. I think that's the reason that they decided to do that, and they like to work in, work in this area, so.
All right, thank you, sir.
And I will say, just to add on to that, we're very grateful for them because they chose to honor the bid, even though we have delayed it due to holding the, signing the hold harmless agreement, so that's something we'll probably remember for the future, they were very gracious with us, because they could have told us they won't honor that amount anymore, it's past the 30 days, but they did, so that was very nice of them.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Any questions from the audience on this item? If not, we'll move on, I'll take a motion on this item.
Mayor, move for approval for this canopy budget, RMA Commercial.
Say.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Ball in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're gonna move to item three, discuss and consider film-friendly guidelines to promote and encourage development of the film and entertainment industry within the city. Laura Marie.
Yes.
It's freezing to death.
Yes, freezing to death. Mayor, council, what you have before you today is a request to approve our participation in an economic development program that comes out of the governor's office. It's called Film Friendly Cities. Yes, there is the website. It is basically an economic development program that's been around for at least 30, 40 years. There's 160 cities in Texas that participate in it, yes, right up there, 160. It has several components to it. The first one is it has a media production zone, it has production incentives, the section that we are seeking to be part of basically follows that, but also adds some local incentives for businesses. If you go to the Fort Worth website, Milford's gonna pull up some, yeah, he's gonna pull up some websites that kind of show you what some of the local incentives could be. In Dallas, they have, for example, an incentive that says if you need more than 15 rooms for your production company to bring in actors and crew and things like that, they'll give you an incentive. Fort Worth is probably the most prolific in their local incentives. It goes on and on, you may have to, oh, okay. Some of those actually feel a lot like what we would be doing, acting as a liaison for permits and permissions that any of the production companies might need. We would assist with location research, we would help with imagery and locations that production companies could be involved in. We have not actually started the program at this point, but we have started the process to become a film-friendly city. The first thing you have to do is be trained, and I was trained last, last fall, and just from being trained, we've already gotten two leads. The first one was an organic lead, if you remember, Day Tripper came here to town. The very first contact they had with Lake Jackson was the Public Information Office, where they called and asked how could they start filming in Lake Jackson. The other one came directly from the governor's office. It was a national advertising company that was looking to find a house down here in this area. The location scout contacted the Public Information Office on the request of the governor's office, and we did provide them with two options, neither of which were chosen, they chose a different house, but based upon the qualifications, we offered up Modesto's home and the mayor's home. So anyway, that kind of gives you some background, you can see here a couple of the ways that cities start to promote that TV shows and films have been done in their town. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions.
How much is this gonna cost?
Nothing.
It costs the city nothing?
No.
Oh, good job.
It will be, it'll be, I guess, other duties as assigned to me.
Good job. Thank you.
It's interesting that you came to us about this, because just after the first year, the city of Bastrop, they just, the city approved the zoning to allow the construction of a 543-acre movie studio in Bastrop. And so it's bringing a large number of job opportunities to their community. So it's, it's interesting that it, it's coming down, because normally it's been in the Dallas-Fort Worth area and stuff, and so it's now, it's coming down, further down into the, into the area, and it seems to jump down into the southern Texas area, so it kind of skips past our areas, but, so it's, it's great, it's interesting, that's, you know, I don't know that we'll have a big wild west being done in downtown Lake Jackson, but.
So no Yellowstone. So no Yellowstone here.
No Yellowstone here.
They're still out.
It's not over yet. Taylor Sheridan is my favorite screenwriter.
I did watch Day Tripper, and they done an excellent job.
Yes, they did.
Promoting the city, they, with the restaurants, and Just Way, That Way, and everything, they done a great job.
I was talking to the producer after that, and he called me several months later, and he said that they do plan on coming back, and they want to do more in-depth stories and stuff, so hopefully that'll happen soon also. It's great. So what do you want from us?
So after being trained, then you have to get approved by your council for film-friendly guidelines, which have been reviewed by Sherry and by David Walton, to make sure that it complies with everything, so that would be the next step. The last step would be that I would need to gather photos of, that could possibly be seen locations around Lake Jackson.
So clean your houses.
Upload to the website all those photos, and then after that would be a community campaign to ask for permission from different residents, maybe a house, maybe a business owner, that might want to participate and want their site listed on the website as well, with the governor's office and locally.
Yeah, we have some very unique, you know, I mean, the mid-century modern architecture down here is top-notch, we have beautiful parks, we got the ocean, we got, you know, so yeah, that's, that's cool, I'm sure there's lots of stuff that we could pitch for that.
I mean, you never know, I mean, my sister's always calling for houses to be, can we blow this house up? For CBS, and so.
We can make that happen. I'll find a house that will.
For the right price, you can blow my house up.
I'll work with Will on that.
So are we looking for a motion to approve these guidelines?
I think just kind of a motion that, for us to move forward with our application.
All right. Okay, so I'll take a motion if someone, so.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
One second.
Motion in a second, any further discussions?
Do you have the ordered property available?
That's right, 1,000 acres.
1,000 acres, yeah.
Great job.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Move on to item four. We have authorize city manager to execute a contract with Baker and Lawson for the engineering design for Pine Oak, Pine Oak Court, Forest Oak, Sycamore, and North Shady Oaks in an amount not to exceed $195,600, Sal.
Okay, this is the second project in the down issue that was approved by the electorate, and this is the, those particular projects doing the same, on the same stop of work that we performed the last one at the Woolen Parks area, and their, their proposed fee is in very close, in very close proximity to the one that they, that they gave us on the other project there, so we know that we're, you know, they have been very reasonable, and they were, you know, they were willing to negotiate with us to that, to that price.
Yeah, so they're about 1,000, 100,000 less than what our budget for.
Yes, correct. Yes, as far as the budget amount, you see that there was a 285,000, and so there's about a 90,000 dollars.
Sal, what's the timeline on finishing and being out for bid?
They said that they would be at the outset about four months of design work. And after that one, we'll, we'll say it's probably gonna be about a two-month period for us to be able to put it out for on the street and actual work.
And were you able to look at a cost differential for a wider street?
I have a cost differential right now, I was working, I was working on a little bit of a spreadsheet on that one to show you the cost at first, Bush, we're looking at about a, depending on the width, width is the one determining factor here, right now, we've got a 27-foot wide street as a standard, going to a 32, I looked at different widths there, trying to find the pros and cons of each, and that's probably, that's what's delaying me, give you a little bit of a, of a spreadsheet on that, on that, but going on a 32-foot, which would be my first option, well, not first option, but an option. I also have a 36-foot option there, that's the reason why I was hesitant there. You gotta, you gotta look, you gotta look at the, at the lane, travel lane entrances in order for you to make a decision on that one. 32 being the minimum, 36 being the ideal, we're talking about a, it's a 28, 28% and a 46% difference, 27-foot wide cost there, so we're talking about 1.3 on a 32 and a 1.5, let's say, for a 36.
One of the reasons we're asking, you know, this, the mayor brought up, and I know, I believe he'll bring it up in the streets of plan, is, is the possibility of looking at a different standard for our streets, a wider street standard. And so we'll explore that each time, but my fear is that, you know, a lot of our, you know, our estimates that we brought to the public and for the bond issue was our normal street standard, so I don't know if we'll be able to change it, change it, but it's something we'll look at and see. I think you'll have to have a future discussion of, you know, can we pull this off? We're also, we had also talked to Baker and Lawson about this, the design cost stays the same, really, you know.
Yes, so they signed us and come into play.
They only get one shot to design it, they can't design it twice for us.
Correct.
But they did, Mr. Raesler had mentioned that they think that they have, they have so much experience with other cities, that they have somewhere in their database the standard for every community, probably, you know, you know, in Fort Bend and Missouri County, that, you know, if we can get a, a hold of that, we may try to also, when we have this discussion, to see where we stand. I really don't know.
I'd be really curious to know what they're seeing most common, the most common standard.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's, that's what we asked for, he has not provided me that information, but that was.
It was just, I mean, we, I mean, we, we do get knocked that our streets are a little narrow, but for all I know, it may be now common.
Yes.
So we'll find out.
Plus, we need to also look at the thickness of the concrete and maybe the strength of the concrete, because a lot of streets are failing.
Well, we.
Long time, 40 years.
Remember, we went from a six-inch to an eight-inch concrete pavement, so.
I think there we have improved, and we probably, we'll ask that question as well.
Yeah, very few, very few cities that.
When we do hear back from the developers, we are told we are out of the norm there, so we'll find out if that's true or not.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? Again, we look for authorization to city manager to proceed with the design work. If not, I'll take a motion on this item.
Then for approval.
Motion to approve, a second. Motion to approve, a second. Any other questions? Any comments from audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to item five. All right, you're going to go spend some big bucks. Approved purchase of generator for the wastewater treatment facility from Worldwide Power through by board contract 19001, in the amount not to exceed 1.2 million dollars.
That's correct. So, good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to ask for your approval for the authorization to proceed with this purchase. What we are replacing is a 2003 model, and we want to upgrade that, replace it and get it ordered. We need 50% down to get it ordered, and it's going to be 32 weeks on delivery time. So we need 50% upfront, 35% a month out, and then the final 15 when it gets here, so.
Does this cost include installation?
It does. It includes, we had an electrical engineer come down to the plant to size it correctly and to make sure that we have the equipment that we need to run it once it gets there. So they'll replace the pad, some electrical wiring, and they'll install it, and then they'll do startup for us to, to make sure everything's running right before they leave, so.
Will the old one hold up until we get the new one?
It's.
I know it's probably on its last leg.
Yeah, I mean, it's still running. We're, we're trying to make it until we can get the new one. When they, when the new one gets here, what we'll do is they'll put a rental in, so we have a backup plan while they're installing the new one, so.
Okay.
I think we'll be okay. I mean, fingers crossed, so.
Good job.
Is 18 years the average last ban?
Yeah, they say between 15 and 20 is average. They say the environment down here is really harsh with the humidity and the salt, so.
We got pretty good years out of it.
We did. We got a lot of usage out of that thing, and it's just to the point now where we can't get parts for it.
Yeah, I'll do up-to-date maintenance of it.
Yeah.
And it's a lot to do with outstate.
I think that keeps it running. We do semi-annual maintenance on it. We also run it every week just to check it, so.
That's good.
And Councilman Baker, you asked an excellent question. That is really the reason why we are asking for, to amend the budget and order it now, rather than wait until next fiscal year and start everything in October, because, you know, that would be putting it out a year and a half, and we all feel nervous about that. One of the reasons why we did hold off and didn't put this in the budget is because we were waiting to confirm receipt of our CARES Act funds, which we got in August. And now that we've submitted, you know, our information to them, we feel more comfortable at least making an early recommendation of a first project we submit with us funds. And so this will be split out of what staff is recommending is there's a 2017, I believe it's 2017, water and sewer bond funds that we have, a remaining portion of, that would pay for 50% of it, and then the other 600,000 would come out of the CARES Act funding.
Great job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll take a motion to authorize purchase, or not?
Both for approval.
Motion to approve the purchase. Need a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Any question from audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Move on to item six, which is city manager updates.
What we wanted to give you tonight, Megan had handed out the budget schedule and the first item on there, so this is for council. These are, it's a lot easier to read than what we put in there, which is for council and for staff. This just includes just the meetings that we're asking council to attend. And of course, you can see the first one that we're, is February 28th, which is open to the public, is the golden visioning workshop, which really is just our first foray into the budget, because that kind of lays the groundwork for staff for the next three years when we have budget discussion, so. That's our meeting. If you can look those over, and if you do have any changes, send them to Megan or I. If there's something that we do need to make a change, I know February 28th is probably a little difficult to change now, but the other ones probably, we can have some wiggle room. And I know we had a debate today, do we take that July 16th workshop number two off, since we've, I don't ever remember us using it, but as soon as we take it off, it'll be a year that we don't need it, so we'll keep it on there. So if you can just keep your calendars clear.
And just, just an early awareness of, on February 28th, when we do the goals and visioning, it's, it's, the workshop is going to be a little bit more workshop than just review. So there's going to be some, some opportunity for a lot more interaction with council and staff on that day.
Yes. Be ready to fill out a lot of sticky notes. Sticky notes. And I think we've, we've taken out the governing portion there, so we can get to kind of the meat and potatoes.
Yeah, the hope is, is to spend, spend it working on work instead of just updates. All right? Any other questions? All right. Move on to item seven, construction updates.
Mr. Gary, the man of the hour.
It's his meeting. Man with all the knowledge.
Man, that's true.
Well, Eddie again, you know, felt break to his back, so he couldn't make it today. Hopefully he'll, you know, he'll heal up past it, come back tomorrow or something.
Are you healthier than your entire staff?
Either that or mummified, I don't know.
I'm glad you said that.
But anyway, as far as the status of the projects, we have now completed the, the Azalea end, dead end over there by the, the HEB area. It's complete. We still have it blocked. We're waiting on the, the property owner to go in there and put in some type of a, of a gate, and I'm talking about a rope gate or some type of source that they can use back and forth whenever they do maintenance there, and still be able to stop traffic from going, going through. So that's, that's the status of it. We are finishing, we're cleaning up the, the contract. We are closing the account by, by this week, the end of this week. We are also now started, as you all know, downtown. They took a little bit of time trying to get their mobilization in action properly. I think they have, they mean business. They do have a lot of personnel out in the field, different from what, you know, has been our experience with those type of contracts. So we're hoping that that is important of what is, of what's going to happen in the future. So they are in the midst of doing some sanitary sewer work, the underground portion, which is usually the first thing that goes in there. They are going to be concentrating right at the intersection of that way, of Circle Way with that way, and working itself towards the, towards the, the Smitharts area. So that'll be the first phase that they're going to be working on. So at this time, they're, they're putting in some underground sanitary sewer connections, I mean, mains, and some manhole work.
How long will this go take?
Well, they have a 10-week period for each of those phases. Whether or not that makes it, I really don't know.
Everything goes right?
If everything goes well, and there's not, no rain involved whatsoever, then yes, we, you know, I'm sure that they can probably do it. They know their, their work.
Just jinxed it.
Just jinxed it, yes, probably so. We haven't had any rain since the start of the year, or even beyond that one, so.
Sal.
Well, we do have snowflakes. We do have snowflakes coming Friday.
Snowflakes?
Yeah.
Wow.
She's like saying it's quiet. Nothing is going to come from this.
I remember it came from me first.
Oh, okay.
The Chappan outfall and stuff that we've been working on and stuff, I saw that Velasco did a lot of work, and I saw they cleaned it all up over there, and it's nice and neat, balanced it nicely.
Yes, they, they did their portion, their, their outfall portion, 100 feet of that, and their gate worked it. I have contacted a different methodology, a different type of process. As a matter of fact, at the end of the, of this year, I had phone calls from them, and it so happens that the Christmas holidays were moving in, so we were planning on starting, opening up discussions on whether or not it's even possible, and what the possibilities are going to cost. Because I told them, because the other methods we tried or we discussed, having come across were, you know, under our budget. So they said they would, they would entertain and start discussion with us on that.
Can I piggyback off the mayor? I was going to ask a question towards that. I see some heavy equipment out on 288 across from the mall, and I wonder, was that part of the Chappan outlet?
No.
Was it completed? Or was it completed or whatever?
We don't have any work going on over there, so I don't know.
I think that was Velasco when they were finishing up their work over there. They did, they did have it be scrubbed by the gates.
Okay, yeah, by the gates, correct.
Oh, by the gates, okay, that was Velasco's problem.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions on Sal for any kind of the projects?
Appreciate it.
Anything else on bond projects?
No, sir. He updated you on downtown. It's going well. We've gotten a little bit of feedback. With the scope of this project and how large it is, any specifics that anyone can give, so it's just, it's really helpful for us to identify actual problems. And then if you get feedback, we would like the contact information for the person, if possible, if they're comfortable giving it, just so we can update them as staff on how it's going and see if they have any other concerns. So as you're getting feedback, it's, that's just helpful for us, and everything can come to me if you'd like. I'm probably your best, your best bet. If you give it to Sal, he'll just rush it to my office, so. He points the finger at me now, so.
It's good, I mean, because if, we can also, you know, find out if there's common questions, like, oh, okay, we need to go out there and answer that for the general public, because we received 10 questions.
I've already heard feedback on the.
It's been mostly positive. And we did add a link on the front page of the website that goes directly to where all the updates can be found. So if you get questions on that, we're happy. The mayor and I did a video, so, yeah, he made me be in it. But, yeah, so any questions, we're more than happy to answer them. It's just the more specific, the better, you know, if they are complaining about a street, we're doing five of them, so.
I did have one question, and maybe either you or Sal can answer this. Have we had any clarification on Center Point, how they will install the lights? Will they install them by street, or will they wait like they did in the first phase until the whole project is, is finished?
Yes, we've been in touch with the light division, and they, well, first of all, Eddie told them that we would like to keep the lights going as long as we can, if it's possible, even to the point that we may be able to pay them additional funds in order to be able to do that and create some other ways of feeding that, that circuits.
Because that, it was, you know, the first project, it was dark for a long time.
And he's supposed to come back at us and tell us whether or not that's possible and what it's going to take. Yes.
As soon as we have that information, that would be good information to get out.
Yeah, we don't want to have a full, the full downtown unlit.
Yeah.
During all this.
And I assume that we don't have in our inventory of equipment, we don't have portable lighting in our.
No, none of that. We would do something like that.
You can get staff out there with flashlights. That's all I got.
That's why we're, we're willing to.
The only thing that kind of saved our bacon in the first project is we had already installed the pedestrian lighting, which is kind of on our own internal, but it's not Center Point.
We are, we have even requested that they look at some of the lighting that is not paid for by the city, and it's really under the control of the property owners that use that as security lining in order to have something in the vicinity there during all this process. So we're asking them to contact the property owner, make the necessary improvements or, you know, repairs to the system they have.
Center Point's been wanting to come down and talk to us, so we might be able to push that up to where we can bring them down here and look at it. They want to talk about a lot of things to improve our ability with, survive another windstorm type stuff.
Again, I think Bill asked for it, you know, years ago, we just need one of those big highway lights. Just one. Just right in the middle.
Right in the center.
That's probably what they're talking about.
Then at Christmas time, we can hang.
We can hang, make it a tree.
Oh, great idea. Love Christmas.
All right, that's, that's great. Yeah, just back to the downtown. I was talking to Megan and Modesto this weekend, because I did get some calls and concerns about some things, and, and so I sent, I ended up sending them the link, and a lot of people went to it, and after they went to the link, for two things, they were very appreciative of the PDF drawing, but then they were even more appreciative of the slide deck, that it was extremely informative to them. And I hope that we're going to put the city artwork up, because all the response I got was they are excited about that.
It's in the project right now, so.
And everybody's wondering what that is.
The lake.
Oh, I know what it is.
Yeah.
The lake sun.
It's on the page, so.
It's on the page. Once they saw that, that would.
It's in the renderings. It's, it's part of the project.
It's a throwback to the.
Lake Theater Sun.
The Lake Theater Sun.
Should be very nice.
The original.
The original, yeah. So, good stuff.
Thank you. And we're, please give us any feedback work. If we're bad. What improvements?
And again, the good key is, key is, is communication and just, you know, talk about it. Yep. I know y'all all are. Okay. Items of community interest. We'll start with JB.
No, sir.
Okay. Rhonda, nothing?
I got a few calls. When they gonna start back to work on their project out there on the corner of the.
They, I spoke with IAG, because they've been interfacing with the state. They're waiting on materials.
That's what I'll tell them.
The ceramics and stuff, I think that's what they're waiting on that. They got, I think the last thing you said, they got the stone, but they don't have the ceramic for all the other stuff, so.
Okay. I'll tell them.
So did?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ben?
I would just remind everyone that January 31st is the last day to register to vote in your March 1st primary elections, so get registered or check and make sure you're registered. There's lots of resources online, but that deadline's coming up before we meet again, so please make sure and do that if you're interested. Thank you.
And to tag along with that, I'm sure you've seen on the news, is that as the change in state legislature, the, if you do mail-in ballots, the process has changed, so be sure you understand, understand that. And the other thing I have to say is that I had the opportunity to attend volunteer fire department's awards banquet. Councilwoman Seth was there along, and then Modesto also, and his wife and stuff, and it was, it was a unique deal, because we made a proclamation, we made that day Andy Anderson's day because of his 55-plus years involvement with the fire, volunteer fire department, back even with the EMS. But the unique thing was, is that was the first time that I had known Andy, that he was speechless. Usually if you put a mic in front of him, he'll talk forever, and he didn't, he couldn't, he couldn't get anything out. He was just, he just wasn't aware that he was going to get that, that recognition from the city, so he was very pleased.
Wes didn't be able to make the meeting.
Yeah, Rich, he wasn't going to be able to make it.
Chief Harper said you won't be making it.
That's right. So that was good, and we have a great group. I know y'all all, we all appreciate them and stuff, and it was just, it was a good family night. It was good to see their families, because that, the families make the commitment too and stuff, so. Anything for staff?
No, just, I got the same thing. It was a very, it was very heartwarming, and honored to be invited to the.